Aloha, everybody. Welcome to the confirmation hearing on Governor's Message 533. Hopefully, you'll indulge me. I'm from the House side, and we normally don't do these kinds of things. So this is my foray into this. But appreciate, we're, you know, obviously wanted to move on these Governor's Messages right away. You have a very important job to do with a lot of things, including that leaking thing downstairs. So with that, we'll go ahead. We have Governor's Message 533, "submitting for consideration and confirmation as a Deputy Comptroller, Department of Accounting and General Services, gubernatorial nominee Mei Ling-Siliman." Got that right, right? Niuleng Siliman. McKelvey's hard to pronounce. "for a term to expire on 12/07/2026." We're going to go ahead and hello.
Hello.
You've been to this before, so. We're going to go ahead, and we have testifiers who submitted written testimony to testify on the Governor's Message. And with that, we'll go ahead and call out the testifiers who we've received. The first up, we have from the Office of the Governor, Governor Josh Green, M.D. He has submitted a written testimony in support of the nomination. We have the nominee themselves, individual. Please come to the table.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair McKelvey, Senator San Juan Ventura. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today regarding my nomination to serve as a Deputy Director for the State of Hawaii, Department of Accounting and General Services. I'd like to share a little bit about my background and experience. So I was born and raised in Malaysia, and never in my father's dream did I imagine that I would be sitting here in front of a committee testifying on my nomination to be the Deputy Comptroller. I'm very honored that Governor Green nominated me and humbled by his confidence in me and his position. I came to this country under a full scholarship to a wonderful, wonderful college that provided me with an educational background, which has served me well. But most of all, it taught me critical thinking skills, something that has served me well in all the positions that I've had and, to a certain extent, defined who I am. And I see that in, it looks like, a comment that's to all the testimonies that have been submitted in support of my nomination. Having a career in the public sector has never been a dream of mine. After graduating from graduate school, I was prepared to enter the world of management consulting. But as fate would happen, I landed a job at the District Attorney's Office in New York, my first foray into the public sector. I served there for 10 years, moving up in various administrative positions as the Deputy Director of Fiscal Affairs and also Deputy Director of Operations. And my family moved here subsequent to that. A young family in search of the perfect place to raise our children, and we found it. And also fortunately, there were opportunities to go back into the public sector. And to date, I've served about a little over 15 years state service. In administrative positions, about seven and a half years at the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs as the Business Management Officer, followed by about two and a half years at the BNF, Department of Budget and Finance, as a branch chief. And following that tenure at DAGS as the Business Management Officer. I was appointed Deputy Comptroller by the outgoing administration, Governor UK, back in October, and I've been in that position since. My areas of responsibilities at the DA's office involve program initiatives, fiscal management, automation, procurement, telecommunications, space planning, and facilities management. A lot of these areas are what you would find at DAGS. Each of the positions that I've been in involve a strong administrative component and entail progressively greater and broader responsibilities in support of budgetary and fiscal affairs and organizational management, an area where I am very comfortable with. To each new position, I brought energy, creativity, innovation, vision, and sincere dedication to the long-term best interests of the organization. All these administrative positions provided me with experience in major functional areas in management. My record of proven leadership and management skills have prepared me for the unique challenges of the department. My diverse background within each of these variously publicly funded administrative positions has provided me with the requisite qualifications to serve the state well in the capacity of Deputy Comptroller. DAGS is a central support agency. Our work impacts the departments and agencies of support. If DAGS fails, there will be impacts on those we serve. So with your support and the support of the wonderful people at DAGS, I look forward to the privilege of serving alongside Comptroller. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate you being here to testify and for your commitment to service. We will move on to the next testifier on the list. We have the Acting Comptroller, Mr. Keith Regan.
Chair McKelvey, Senator San Juan Ventura, thank you so much. I stand on my written testimony as submitted. Just wanted to add that it's been an absolute pleasure working side by side with Niuleng these past three months. She brings an incredible wealth of knowledge and experience to the table, serving as Deputy Comptroller. I have the utmost trust and faith in her ability, and I would look forward to serving with her if this committee so sees that she should be confirmed. And I would humbly ask that you please confirm her for this position.
Thank you for joining here. We appreciate it. Vani Kahakui, Acting Administrator of the State Procurement Office. We have received written communications in support from her. Louis P. Salavaria, Director, Department of Budget and Finance. We've received written testimony in support from him as well. Sabrina Nassar, Deputy Director of Department of Budget and Finance. Oh, no, that's not you. That's not Sabrina. Written testimony in support. Neil Miyahira, Administrator of Department of Budget and Finance, also written in support. Gary S. Suganuma, Director of Department of Taxation. He has submitted written testimony in support. Jay Bhutai, Director, Department of Labor and Industrial Relations. Supposed to be in person, but submitted written testimony in support. Ed Sniffin, Director, State Department of Transportation. Written testimony in support from him as well. Don NS Chang, Chairperson of Department of Land and Natural Resources. Written in support. Tommy Johnson, I definitely saw you.
Good afternoon, Chair McKelvey and members of the committee. I'm Tommy Johnson, the Director, Department of Health, AP. I'll stay on my written testimony and support. I just want to summarize something real quick. Anyone who can survive working for the DOE, the Department of Consumer Affairs, Voucher and Finance, six years at DAGS, my God, who else can do the job? Thank you very much.
That's about the most honest testimony I think we've seen on anything, including Bill's. Thank you for that, Director. Appreciate it. Kathy Bettsen, Joseph Campos, the Second Director and Deputy Director of DHS. They have written testimony in support. Sharon Hurd, Chairperson of Hawaii Department of Agriculture. Written testimony in support. Keith Hayashi, Superintendent, Department of Education. Written in support. Russell Yuchita, Deputy Stadium Management for D-BED. Written in support. Doug Murdock, Chief Information Officer, ETS. Thank you so much for being here, noting your support of the nominee. Kristin Zoomin-Nitau, Executive Director of the Campaign Spending Commission. Hey, Kristin, don't recognize that.
Good afternoon, Chair. Senator San Juan Ventura. Kristin Zoomin-Nitau, Executive Director, Campaign Spending Commission. We stand in strong support of this nominee, and I just wanted to share with you as an administratively attached agency, so we're not one of the divisions directly under DAGS, but we are administratively attached. I've had the privilege of working with Niuleng for many years now. She's extremely dedicated, hardworking, couldn't be a better fit. And I have no doubt she, part of her decision in going forward with this is to help offices like mine to hope that we have a smoother transition. And I think we're very, very lucky to have her and as well as Acton Comptroller Keith Regan. So I'm delighted to stand here before you in strong support of this nominee. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. It means a lot to us that you came down here personally to testify on behalf of the nomination. We got Scott Nago, Chief Election Officer. Written in support. Scott Glenn, Director of Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, also written in support. We have Rena Hashimoto, Director of Department of Human Resources Development. Written in support. We also have received late testimony from the Department of Health. Written in support. Kaylee Lopez, here as an individual. Yes. Glad you did.
I'm sure Niuleng would testify to the fact that DCC was one of the easiest departments for her to work for.
We miss you.
But thank you, Chair McKelvey and Chair, not Chair, but Representative, I'm Senator, sorry. Messing myself up. San Juan Ventura, thank you so much. I'm excited about being here because I don't think you could, Niuleng is a consummate example of a hard-working, dedicated public servant. When I think of that term, "public servant," absolutely Niuleng. And it is an example of how she's moved from different departments. And in each of those instances, worked to do better and bring all her experience to make those improvements. DAGS is like the best place she could land, and I really see that as very important to the State of Hawaii and state workers and state offices to be able to have someone like Niuleng at DAGS to really help make people's jobs hopefully easier. So I stand in strong support and definitely submit my testimony as an individual. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, Kaylee. We really do appreciate it. We have the Executive Director of Hawaii Public Housing Authority. Late testimony, written in support. Cheryl Park, Director of Office of Strategic Practices.
I want to dittle what everybody else said. I think Mei Ling is going to be an excellent Deputy Director, and she brings the experience and expertise to continue doing the great job that DAGS has been doing. And I think she's going to make a great team with Acting Director Keith Regan. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. We have Lay from Steven Logan, Brigadier General, Department of Defense. Sends written support, testimony in support. We've also received numerous pieces of written testimony from numerous individuals, all in support of the Deputy Director's nomination. Rather than read them out, I'm just going to ask that anybody, is there anybody in the audience who submitted written testimony as an individual who would like to come forth and testify?
Chair McKelvey, Senator San Juan Ventura, my name is Tony Benabise. I've worked with Niuleng for about four years now, and I always respected her subject matter expertise. And everybody I know in the department respects her and look up to her, and she's really easy to work with, and I think she'd be a great leader for our department. So I strongly support her confirmation and ask that we confirm her. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. That means a lot because you're there in the department. And so please come forward.
Aloha, Chair McKelvey, Senator San Juan Ventura. I'm Chris Kimmaka, testifying as an individual on behalf of Niuleng Siliman. But with all the enthusiastic support I heard today, I did want to share that in my capacity as a public works administrator, we are so relieved and happy that Niuleng was selected and nominated for this position. You can imagine coming from public work to our wonderful clients that we have a lot of challenging work. We have a lot of creative problems and need creative solutions. We need leadership that's supportive, collaborative, and responsive, and that's totally Niuleng. So we appreciate the expertise and the knowledge and the guidance that she brings. She holds her hands, she guides us through, and saves a day so many times that we really truly support her nomination and ask you to confirm her nomination as well.
Thank you so much for being here. Is there anybody else in the audience who signed up as an individual who would like to testify? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience who would like to come and testify on the Governor's Message and the nomination? Seeing none, member, do you have any questions of the nominee? No, do not. I have some questions, if you don't mind. Want to make sure I'm doing my due diligence as part of the process. You've given us a great description of your experience in the field, as was evidenced by the testimony. But, you know, we all have strengths and we all have weaknesses. What would be your honest assessment of those strengths and weaknesses as you see them as Deputy Director?
In terms of strength, I am a people person. I work well with people. I have a proven record of leadership, and I truly believe that if you mentor the people that you work with, you end up developing and creating an excellent team of people to work with you. And I've always prided myself in being able to do that. And after leaving the DA's Office in New York, that's in my past, a few years, but I have folks who worked for me who have remained lifelong friends. And I think when I look back, that's because of my ability to work with them. I do believe in an open-door policy. I encourage people to come. And, you know, I always tell people that when you have a problem, an issue, and you come to me, come with solutions so we can discuss, because I can dictate and tell you what you should do, but you're the one doing the job. So if you come with recommendations, then we can jointly review, you know, whatever's in front of us. And at a higher level, I might be pre-lead to information that they don't have. So, you know, this collaborative approach is what works for me, and I think that's my strength. Weaknesses, I tend to hold myself to a really high bar, and I expect people to also be held to a high bar. But in all my years now, I have to step back and remind myself, that may not work out. It all depends on who you're working with. Sometimes I expect too much from people who work for me. So I have to be cognizant of the fact that I need to know what their positions are and what the PD says and what their responsibilities are and not to push behind. But so far, I think, you know, by leading folks and having high expectations, I think they do appreciate it because of the way that I manage and handle them.
Thank you for that. What is your assessment of the department's strengths and weaknesses? And if you could explain, give us an explanation of how these departments' strengths may be best utilized, as well as what you see as the weaknesses that could be improved upon?
Yeah, DAGS is a pretty diverse department, but the functions that we have, the core functions, are critical because we are central support. And what we do do impact the other departments and agencies. And I am focusing on internal operations processes. We have a lot of, we have excellent administrators, but oftentimes, they are so inundated with day-to-day, running around, putting out fires, and it is up to me, you know, as leadership, to be able to step back and look at the programs and see where there may be areas of improvement, where there may be inefficiencies. At DAGS, we have a lot of controlless memos. We have a lot of procedures that are already set. Some are so old, they're from the days of the typewriter. So it helps to have a fresh look, to look at things. There may be processes that are antiquated. They might have worked when these things would develop, but may not be anymore. And I think that a lot of areas within DAGS that we need to take a look at. You know, and now with the vacancies that we have, it's more so. At last count, we have 174 vacant positions. That represents 22% of our workforce. So because we have a staff shortage, that does not mean that there is a corresponding decrease in the work. We still need to meet the workload. And I'll give you an example. I took a look at the Accounting Division. 40% vacancy rate. Accounting is one of our core functions, and I actually focus in on the Vouchering section. They process about 70,000 vouchers annually, about 1,400, 1,500 contracts. There are four positions assigned to this section. Three of them are vacant. So there is only one sole individual processing the paperwork on the vouchers. And if we don't do them timely, it will result in delays in payments. There will be penalties, interest, and of course, the vendors will not be paid timely. So what can we do about that? So that's an example of these little pockets areas where we have to look at processes and what we can do to streamline. We live in an age of technology now, so automation may very likely be something we need to look at. So in that instance, the automatic response is to authorize overtime. But there's only one person there. So how can that person put in the hours to do the overtime? So in that instance, I authorized overtime for the staff from PSO. So now it's across programs and on an overtime basis because I didn't want the problems from accounting to now impact operations in ASO if we deploy these staff. So on an overtime basis, we could do it, and the cost would be charged back to the accounting side. It's a temporary solution while we deal with equipment and retention, but it's a workable one. So that's one thing that I can do to look at processes and see where we can help. And then I also, while I was at it, looking at the resources, the human side, what about processes? Then we, Comptroller and I, we shout and ask, are there areas of concerns? What can we do? Where can we help? And anecdotally, we were told that there are a lot of mistakes and errors that are coming in from the departments and the paperwork to be processed. Then the obvious question was, what type of errors do we know? We don't know because there's no data. This is anecdotal. So what can we do about it? We're now looking at fill-up forms. So instead of manually checking off a transmit or sending it back without developing the fill-up forms and with the data, and have our IT folks scrape the data at the backend. So now we have a database, and hopefully, we can do the data analysis and figure out what the problems are and what we can do to change. If perhaps we need to do training, if there are targeted departments that are running into problems, then we can reach out to them directly. So, yeah, so there are processes in place that have been around for a long time, and perhaps this is a time that we can look at streamlining and making things a little bit more effective.
That's one of the things that we hope you'll be doing in conjunction with the Comptroller. As I talked, as we discussed in your team interview, and that didn't precedent that you came in as a team, is that you are now the acting interim until the confirmation. So it's matter implementing. And so the fact that you were able to come as a committee, identify it, and have an active implementation to address these things on point, it's good.
And I have hands-on, practical experience in program review, business process reengineering. So all those things I'm comfortable with, and I'm familiar with methodology and how to go about doing those things.
Thank you so much. That is all the questions that I have of the nominee. Do you have any questions there, Senator? No? Any additional questions from you?
Yes.
So, yeah, please.
Okay, so you talked about, I guess, automating as a way to, as a way to, I guess, alleviate the vacancies. I mean, so are you folks asking for more IT? Or, I mean, I didn't hear a more particular response, I mean, other than automate.
Right, so there are a lot of things that we do manually. What we can do, for example, when COVID hit.
Okay, let's talk about the three vacancies. That's 75%.
Yes.
Okay, out of four. And if you folks don't process the vouchers kindly, it has a cascading effect on whether or not those vendors will then be able to pay for their employees, will then be able to, okay. So what I want to know is, how are you going to fill those three vacancies?
That is an overall discussion that we have. It's not only for this particular section, but department-wide. Comptroller have been working on, and we've gotten approval to do the Wiki Wiki.
When did you get that approval?
I think it was a couple of weeks ago. But that, it depends. That's, I think, is only for the engineers. And in the Vouchering section, we're talking about conflicts.
How long was this vacancy still?
The last one was about more than six months ago, maybe six, seven, eight months ago.
Okay, so before that, it was, I mean, how many of these were long-term, more than one year?
None.
So all of it was just within the past six months?
Past six months or so, yeah.
Okay, and then you sent out to de-here, I guess, requests to get them filled. You get, yeah. So you talked about automation. Is it regarding this particular department, regarding the voucher?
That is correct because the, we do have the financial system. So we have statements that you are probably aware of. But these are the documents that are generated from the data entry. So they need to be audited to make sure that the data is correct before we process for payments. So this is what that voucher.
I mean, I know we need to do the checks and balances before payments go out. But, okay, I'm giving services in health care. And when the vouchers for my people are not paid, I hear about them because then they have a hard time, you know, paying their employees. And then, of course, it's a cascading.
As it is.
So I guess I wanted more of an aggressive approach to filling vacancies. Okay.
Noted. So in that particular section, the factors are kind of beyond our control because it depends on the, we put in the request to de-here for lists, so we need to interview off those lists. And I think you probably would have heard from a lot of departments that when we contact potential applicants, no response, not interested, or we could barely get people to come for interviews. So that is a challenge that all departments have.
That's right.
Yeah.
And each, we're doing these GMs, and each, I guess, Chair has a particular request as to what the department head is going to do. I know like the chairman wants figuring out these remote workers. Me, my interest is any aggressive approach to filling these vacancies.
Yes, and I'd share that with the Chair. So, I mean, are you guys actively going beyond your, given how critical these positions are, I mean, like the librarians have done, have they taken upon themselves to get out? Is there going to be an aggressive approach to these positions?
So we are beginning to, looking into, and we will be participating in job fairs. And in fact, we're now looking at the feasibility of running ones ourselves in the colony, Moku, building.
Can you make a commitment to us that this will be a top priority, that given the aggressiveness of going after these, that we can get these three positions filled within the next six months?
We are in the process, and we are interviewing. But to your point, what more can we do? So this outreach and Comptroller, all the different events that he attends, he tries to get the word out to whoever the audience is, that there is a process that you have to go through, and there are a lot of employment opportunities with the state. And I.
Okay, but you guys are competing with a lot of other employers who are labor shortages. And frankly, I'm just going to let you know, I mean, I've heard of more innovative ways to get and recruit workers, and I'm not hearing anything from you. Your resume.
Your resume looks wonderful, okay? You've got all these people who are vouching for you, but the bottom line is whether or not they're going to be able to do the job. So, yeah, we will go back and look at it again. Again, these positions are conflicts. There are only. Other than this one, you said it's like 40% vacancy rate? And where's that 40% vacancy rate? They are all over, across the board. Some of our larger divisions, I think, in the public works in that area. ETS, I believe, has vacancies too. And some positions are a little bit easier to hire. Now, in the past three months since December 5th, we did fill about 50 positions. You're filling out upon many? We were running at about 120 something at that point. But as we fill their positions, we've been tweaking, yeah.
I think that chair brings up a good point, you know. Especially when the areas, those three positions you talked about, it affects so many other programs, and all of these vendors, they don't get paid. It's a cascading effect. And so I think the charge has been laid upon you. We'll continue this conversation at the Comptroller's confirmation hearing as well, on what you're doing to be aggressive to fill these things and what kind of definitive benchmarks are we going to get in return? Because DAGS is the main organ of state government to all these agencies. You guys fail, and then all these agencies start to fail across the board.
That is true.
And so we're going to put that upon you here at the hearing because I think that's going to help to determine the level of support that the committee members can give you in the recommendation.
Yeah, like neighbor island schools are under DAGS for some reason. I'm not quite sure why, not the DOE. And that's so terrifying.
Well, we're going to be taking that up with the Comptroller on point of all the successes and shortages of that, so. But any more questions to the Deputy Director? No? Anymore?
No.
No, okay.
But we are, we, I strongly recommend that you folks look at other ways of getting those positions filled. Okay? Because that one person is going to be super overworked, and he's going to quit, and you guys are going to have nobody. Right, right. I mean, one option is to contract it out, but the problem with contracting out to look for temporary help, they need to be familiar with state processes. So there's going to be training involved. So the one person that's left there really can't do any training. And that's why our interim solution is to have staff from ASO assist on an overtime basis. They do not require training. They're doing the work, but at a department level. So now they're just doing it at a statewide level.
Thank you very much. Well, what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead, and we're going to consult further with the committee members and our other members in the caucus. And we're going to come back on Thursday, March 16th at 3:00 PM for a recommendation on the nomination. We appreciate you and everybody being here, in particular answering the tough questions as a Deputy Director to myself and the committee members. And we hope that you can provide further communication in the meantime on the issues that were brought up today. And of course, we'll be bringing them up again at the Comptroller's hearing. With that, this Governor's Message hearing is hereby adjourned.